Councilman James, since you just got back from a lengthy worldwide trip with a great team, would you like to lead us in the first of the agenda items?
I would like to lead this. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a councilman, Councilman Brooks, Councilman Misha, Lady Watson, maybe you can give a report.
Um, no, the, whatever it is, has a good, this world society, and then, and their own things. But my kids did the Memorial Day event, also always said, wow, that's the voice and staff, we really appreciate it, it was a really touching, moving, um, story told by two veterans. And a really good, good thing to do, and they're a big one, I highly recommend it. That's all.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Yeah, I've got a couple of things I did. First of all, Memorial Day, that was a very nice presentation, and thank you for involving that. Looked out really well. Second of all, I don't know how many of you have seen this article, in the Independent paper, um, a couple of weeks ago, they had written an article regarding, uh, the flock cameras, and, um, a number of other issues that here in town, that they were really, uh, hadn't done their homework. And so Matt, in, in, as I was hoping would do, and he did, did a really nice job, is, Matt Williams, the city manager, wrote a response to it, and it's, and it, and it lists the articles where they were wrong, and it was, basically, the whole article was wrong. And it was really a slam on Litchfield Park, and it, and, for no good reason, and I didn't, but I really appreciated doing that, thank you.
And they printed it.
I'm sorry?
And they printed it.
And they printed it, yeah, right. And maybe they got a couple of things right, who knows? Um, the third thing was Senator Kelly was in town last week, and I went to a meeting, he had, he had invited the mayors and one council member, or one whatever, uh, to come to a meeting at the, uh, which is really a nice place, uh, the, uh, the training center that's, uh, to the west of Glendale Dome, um, there's a, there's a large training center there. And if you haven't seen it, it's, it's pretty impressive, that's, that's, that's quite a, quite an operation that they've got going there. And, uh, anyway, Senator Kelly came in and he talked to, uh, to the, you know, probably thirty or forty years, I don't know, and he was talking about, basically, one of the biggest things was, uh, Luke Air Force Base, and also the, uh, the, uh, Goldwater Range down south here, and how there, there needs to be some improvement to that. And he is, uh, obviously strongly in favor, but more to the point is that it, it was, he was really impressed, and he spoke strongly about how the unity of all the West Valley communities have come together to support the F-35 program, and how important that is back in Washington, that everybody has come together and, and to support it. And, uh, so I would say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that, and, uh, really good job.
Thank you for attending on our, on our agenda. Councilman James, number four.
Thanks. Nothing more, else I can do. I'll send all my comments for the agenda.
Don't get in trouble, yeah.
Welcome, bye.
Anthony, for the whole happy summer solstice, we'll be late till eleven o'clock today. I hope so. Um, I, so I serve on the Westmark Ford, which is the West Valley Economic Group, which is really awesome, because it, like John was saying, it's represented by all the cities. And every time I go to a event, every time, somebody from another city comes to me and tells me what they liked in Litchfield Park. The last one was a P I O surprise, the Woodland Park Cafe, um, of course, the mayor of Abidale and I love the brewery, seen him many times there, and so forth, so I, it just encourages me, obviously, when we build it, they will come, because they're already coming, and so, so, you know, awesome to hear about what's going on in the West Valley, all the projects, because I get stopped and say, I love it, blah, 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 so, pretty cool, we know that, but I'm just glad to know they know that, too. That's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blair, number four. Do we have the vice mayor on the phone, so we can hear your report about?
Mr. Watson, can you hear us, sir? You can barely hear me, sir, one second. Mr. Watson, hold on, sir.
Is this?
It's green on here.
Yeah.
We good to try again, guys?
Does microphone work?
He's unmuted now.
Watson, I'm listening to you now, sir. We still just barely hear you, sir.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, we appreciate your comments, but we can't comment, so we're gonna have to move on. We'll see when we figure out the technical things in the future, if you have something else you'd like to say, that one of the business items. I don't know if there's another, I don't know, is there another phone you can call me on, or is it, I don't know, we appreciate it, so.
We have the city clerk, sir.
All right, city clerk's gonna give you her number, you can try calling on that number to participate on the agenda items. Uh, okay, my report, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Romack for going to the meeting with Senator Kelly. Senator Kelly is, uh, been an important person for us, that we try to support and see moving forward with this mission, creating the greatest fighter pilots in the world, so we are appreciative of the time that we're getting started in. Uh, also, we had a great, Memorial Day service was very, very good, well attended, and it was a very nice service, ceremony, and we also had a good birthday for the Army, Army Employee Birthday, which was well attended, and also a nice flag raising ceremony for them. At this point in my report, I'm gonna recognize instructor's side, because we don't have any agenda items, if you have a report. Do you have a report? Okay, so I'm gonna let you give it as part of my agenda, my report to you, Watson.
Okay. I think, I think I miscommunicate over the chairs, so my apologies.
No problem, we'll try to make sure we checked it and see if you have a report in the agenda.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Shaw, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager and Staff. I'm Nancy Shager, President of Litchfield Park Historical Society, and I'm here to report on the Heritage Center project, plus a little item at the end. Uh, we have now raised approximately, our capital campaign, two million seven hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five, to date, and that's in pledges and donations, mostly rich in donations. Um, pledges total, three hundred and one thousand, nine hundred to date, and all the we paid at the start of construction. The project expenses to date are approximately one hundred and forty-five thousand, and that is architect, legal fees, and our test bid. We are in the application process to receive a grant from the Virginia Piper Foundation. We've been told that they do not support capital campaign, however, they are willing to grant, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand so far, based on our letter of inquiry that we sent them, and the, I think we've had three interviews to date, uh, so we're holding on that. Our grant request was presented to their board review on June twelve, and now everybody's on vacation, so we have to wait until July twenty, however, um, that, but the next year. Um, so the project goal remains at three point five million to restore and renovate the Litchfield End Home, that includes the I T system, the exterior landscape, and mental landscape. The amount will be reviewed and adjusted by Orford and Walts Construction, once the dislocation of the infrastructure begins, and we are closer to beginning the actual construction of the project. Our, uh, construction drawings are pending completion, based on the finalization of the city's unhelped agreement. Once the agreement is in place, we'll have the drawings completed, and we're ready to move forward, and we'll be planning the groundbreaking ceremony once construction begins, and we've already put some money in our budget this year, we just did for that, uh, groundbreaking ceremony, so. Um, and then, uh, something really new, an individual from the city of Abidale is working with our board, uh, and we're working with their council, to secure a thirteen thousand donation from the city to the Heritage, Heritage Center project. And for that, they will receive a meaning right, and also, uh, we'll be discussing with them the possibility of accounting donation to our operations in exchange for use of the Heritage Center meeting and community group, so this is very exciting, that's our step into that regional aspect that we've recently done. We've had a donation box into the museum, and amazingly, we are receiving daily donations into the project donation box, as well as our operations donation box, so I wish we just would've thought of it sooner, but it's been great. So that's it on the project. On some organizational news, uh, June thirtieth is the end of my serving to terms as president. Last night at our board meeting, Judy Cook was voted in as our new president, her term begins July first, and a step for our organization is that we have hired our first paid employee, Lisa Haggerty, who will be our executive director, and she will begin July first as well. She will step into her new position, and be working, she'll start out part-time, and move into it as it's time to retire. And that is all for tonight, any questions?
Question from Councilman.
I still think, Nancy, thank you for that report. It's always fun to hear the comments that you're making, um, but I still think that the city should be more involved, as far as funding the balance it's due, and then loaning you the money, and you paying us back at some point. Um, I only have another year left on my commitment here to the council, so I'm gonna keep doing this for another year, and I'm not sure where it'll go, but you never know. I gotta break you out, I already stacked five, so.
Yes, most appreciated, thank you.
You bet.
That's just an aside, and I didn't even know what Councilman Romack was gonna say, but I'm very excited to hear about Lisa being our executive director, and I would like to ultimately someday maybe see us fund that position, maybe. So anyway, that's, again, I'm, I'm only two years old, too, so you guys can just shut us up, but just throwing it out there, so it didn't take minutes.
Well, thank you, everybody, thank you for your continued support, we sincerely appreciate it, and talked about it at our meeting last night, we were discussing, and how much you continue to be there for us as we grow, and help us to grow, and Lisa has been a volunteer with this for many years, she spent four years of my, I was president on the board, and, uh, she is the one that heads up the Waffle Sada, heads up our Speaking Speaker Series, so I know she'll bring a lot to the organization, and can help adults continue on our path to grow, so, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Now we'll move on to the city having a report.
Mayor, if I'm not putting forward anything?
If you'd like to put this to the House. Sir, Mayor?
All right. Just, just the discourse of the Woodlong entire thing, been asked about that by a few citizens, um, cut that out.
Yes, sir. I'm Councilman James Trisha, myself, spoke to Woodlong staff about this last week, and we put down on our website, and I'm talking with them, I'm just sort of, we're, Woodlong is doing their own part of the show, there's, those spectators, and, uh, no law enforcement force, so in the past, the city has split across the power, it's fifty-fifty, and the bits were different this year, so this year we're gonna be a little bit more good. And then we'll be doing our splashy bashy, that we always do, and all the cities around us are gonna be involved, we're gonna do it.
Was that conversation with, uh, Katie Powers?
No, sir, that wasn't. It, it wasn't Katie, what was her name, Jessica?
Yeah.
Katie and Jessica, so.
It should be noted by all residents that having a Fourth of July period fireworks show in the city has been something that's been going on in the past, it has always, when it ran well, it was always conducted on the Woodlong course, and a couple of years, uh, the city and the Woodlong were not, you know, sort of seeing, I am having a Fourth of July celebration, the city tried to do its own Fourth of July, with the fireworks being set off in the area where we're building Litchfield Square, uh, we failed with that. There's trees on fire, we don't, church on fire. It was a little more exciting, and we wanted to help, we ended up doing a joint show again, now that the Woodlong decided that they don't want to probably, and on their campus, we don't have any place to do a fireworks show, so it's not a matter of before to do it, or not wanting to do it, we simply don't have any space to do it, and we could do it safely and not, not jeopardize, you know, some of these houses, or some of these businesses, so. Okay, so that, uh, we will move on, to, uh, this meeting is called Community, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items, and I have one request to speak from one, right over there. We have three minutes, I want to make sure you understand, if we can act on that, or answer your, uh, your inquiry, because it's on the agenda, and we will answer it in the next meeting, especially.
Good evening, esteemed city officials, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and thank you for your time and service. I have been a proud Litchfield Park resident since 2010, after trying years to locate the perfect home within the whole show. Since purchasing the home, I have invested over four hundred thousand dollars in improvements as we love our city, and believe in it. For a quarter month, we have suffered great disruptions to our home and our street. The residence at seven seventy Alverdy Circle East was leveled completely, and significantly constructions completely are altered, our lifestyle. I've been calling City Hall for a month, pleading for someone to assist, I've spoken to Rena, and asked her for help, she never got back to me. I spoke to Brian last week, he said he would look into it, and said he had no authorization to change the time of construction. I left a message with the city manager, Matthew Williams, how he is not calling back. The construction of the home at seven seventy Alverdy Circle East starts, starts at all hours, evening, from the concrete being delivered at four A M, to jackhammering the concrete foundation at four forty-five A M. As a reference, the jackhammering is approximately twelve to fifteen feet from the master bedroom. When researching construction noise, ordinance chapter ten of the Litchfield Park City Code, it reads that construction is to be from five A M to seven A M, May first to September, to, excuse me, September thirtieth. It is ironic that landscaping times from the same period are from six A M to seven P M. I feel there needs to be alignment between construction times in a residential neighborhood to that landscaping time, as weeder to grass is much less intrusive to a jackhammer to a concrete slab. Per chapter ten, C two, Litchfield Park City Code, permit for construction or work to be conducted at different times than those specified above in the issue by the city manager or its authorized representative, upon consideration of the following, if the neighborhood of the proposed worksite is primarily residential in character, we're in sleep, could be disturbed. It is crucial to acknowledge the importance of striking balance between progress and the welfare of the community. We understand that construction is essential for the growth and development of our city, and we wholeheartedly support it. However, we request a reconsidered current timeframe, and make amendments that reflect a genuine concern for the welfare of the residents. Therefore, I am formally requesting the construction time of the seven seventy Alverdy Search Rule, excuse me, seven seventy residence starts at six A M, Monday through Friday, and seven A M on weekends. In conclusion, let us remember that community is built on the foundations of empathy, understanding, and collaboration. Sleep is a fundamental human need, essential for our physical and mental health. It rejuvenates our bodies, by altering the time of construction in our neighborhood, we can preserve the harmony, harmony and tranquility that residents have time to cherish. I implore you to take this matter seriously, and I thank you for your time. Apologize for my nervousness, but obviously, it means having my.
Thank you for coming and writing your search to us, and we will answer for you in our next regular scheduled meeting. Unfortunately, we're not in a meeting in July, so exactly, we'll be in August.
Appreciate it.
You know, a few times, staff may, may, might eventually try back to, to discuss these, these further issues, but that will be up in the staff.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the response to the call we made from the last meeting, we had no, we had no comments in our last meeting, so there was no response. And now we're, takes us to our reports section, Public Services, Public Safety Services Reports, starting with the fire department, Chief Police.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Public Security Fire Chief Morris. Good year, Litchfield Park. So tonight, uh, we'll review May, uh, we had sixteen calls for service, eighty-four percent of those calls were EMS in nature, which was pretty consistent the previous months. And then the other calls that we, we called a bit of attention to, uh, the last Christmas calls, we had eight, and, uh, we had eleven. Again, continuing to work with staff, we did have a meeting onsite at our administration building with the last Christmas calls, and they were very receptive, we shared some of the updates, uh, for them, and, uh, we'll have ongoing conversation, education with that group as well. Uh, the other one that I do want to know, um, we did have a pediatric drowning that happened in May, uh, over on, uh, Woodlong and Litchfield at the, uh, condos, uh, it's, it's an awesome outcome, because we were able to get that child back, uh, child was underwater for a lot of time, our, uh, Abidale pediatrician studied the excellent CPR prior to our arrival, and then we took over as a team, uh, child gained consciousness all the way to the hospital, and actually was discharged from, from his shoulders, so, pretty remarkable save, uh, but a lot of that is attributed to the Abidale officers quickly, um, started CPR on that, on that patient, so, and, uh, helping us, and a good head start with this, with this child, so. I don't have any mail today, I don't, do all the current questions, we have.
All right, what, what news about the, uh, the child, and maybe, you know, you were firing him out today, I know this is probably, the questions, how much you, Council, of all that.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. My, 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 this is the grandson of the priest in our church. Oh, good. Yeah, and, uh, he, he can't say enough for you, that's bothering, you and Phoenix Children's Hospital.
Yeah.
George is doing fine, for the home, and every, everything is awesome.
That's great news. Thank you very much, I totally appreciate your service, sir.
I will.
Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to the reports on the Abidale-Litchfield Department Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, Sergeant Ray, I'm here with Abidale Police Department, uh, so the numbers for May are, we had three hundred and sixty-six calls for service. Out of those, we had a hundred and ninety-eight calls for officer-initiated problems, so that's gonna be traffic stops, uh, business checks, we see suspicious activity, so officers over there get their own calls for service, and we have a hundred and sixty-eight citizen calls for service. So that broke down to fifty-four percent were officer-initiated, and then forty-six percent were citizens. We also had additional forty-four citizen contacts, so those aren't necessarily calls for service, but that's our officers are out, we're dealing with Milwaukee B, or their contact were by a citizen, so we got to our body cameras, and we had a conversation with Willie, who documented it, and we're all. As far as, uh, big calls for service, I always had a touch on the drowning as well, um, yeah, great outcome to that, Mommy did a great job on that, uh, they got us a good year fire, worked really well together, and, and great outcome, so. As far as big calls for service, we have one really good one this month, that turned out really good. Back in, uh, beginning of May, we had had a call from a citizen for suspicious activity at Woodlong, uh, possible drug feeding delta kids there, uh, one of the juveniles came home, thirteen, fourteen-year-old, um, seems kind of acting strange, Mom thought maybe he was on drugs, went through his phone, found some stuff that showed that he was getting drugs from somebody in the park. She called us with the information via drug fight, our street crime unit, undercover detectives out there, uh, did some surveillance, ended up doing some undercover bodies, uh, got a GPS, threw a warrant attached to the vehicle, followed him around, and then after a couple weeks of investigation, we were able to intercept him, arrest him, and do a drug charge. Uh, ended up, uh, he admitted a post-traumatic head injury, dealing with assault, thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids, and we brought this guy, he lives here in the Woodlong community, so, um, we'll get an investigation, and we're able to arrest him, and do it so quickly, all put him on there. And that pretty much all happened, or.
You have a question on? Question if you can ask you. Mary Watson.
First of all, thank you, we appreciate that, so important. Um, and then second, I have just a simple question, S C U, is a, on one of your reports, the case in May, S C U was forwarded, what does S C U stand for?
So S C U is our street crime units?
Thank you.
So that's our undercover undercover detectives?
Thank you.
First time in a few months I haven't seen, uh, anything with the suspected group house, on, we've got calls there, or any updates to what's going on there?
We haven't had any updates, it's been very quiet over there, uh, we do monitor it on a regular basis, and whenever we do get a call for service, uh, we go above and beyond, even though that's a, uh, just a citizen, a sister, or a simple type call, we document everything, but we haven't had any calls from the house or about the house in the last four months either.
And then second, I just wanted to pass on the, um, the Circle K, uh, the manager over there, so, I started making coffee, which I think is fantastic, um, you know, talked to the manager later, um, when they were going through the construction, there was a lot of issues with transients and things, but they, they said that, uh, the Litchfield Park Abidale Police have, have really stepped up their patrols in coming through there, and, and issues that don't really kind of exist, and they were still, there was just more or less just passing that along through.
Thank you.
A thank you from, from our, so.
Any questions?
Just a comment, if I can. It, it, it's just such a good feeling to see our public services working together, even though you guys come from different municipalities, and the kudos, you're telling each other, and the way that you're working together, it means the world to the community, and just thank you.
Uh, just one quick question, excuse me, the traffic, traffic stops, looks like it's got, I'm gonna hook up from the act, and it must've been running in the last several months, along with the number of citations that were issued, you have, is there a reason or cost for that?
We have, we have helped our traffic enforcement in the last month, mainly due to, uh, roundabouts and issues with people speeding, and all of the four-way stop where on Woodlong, Litchfield, and lots of places people were in there, so it becomes sort of the complaints we've had, we've helped our enforcement on that as well.
Then, as the, as the state's staff, for, then we're probably gonna be chasing our speed limits on all roads, you know, that's coming up?
Yeah, we, we, we talked about that, and we're, we're ready for it, so, we're gonna go ahead and speed you guys, as soon as it starts up here, I think, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, all right.
Have we had any illegal golf cart drivers who stopped yet, underage, I guess?
So we did have a call on, uh, June tenth, uh, around dead seven, two thirty-two, West B, uh, area, a three, fourteen-year-old, so they were riding in a golf cart, they booked it, uh, one of them was injured, uh, had a broken ankle, uh, we ended up, through the investigation, and still, we haven't, we're finishing up the investigation right now as far as charges, but on Monday, it should be wrapped up, just submit charges, but we did, a lot of the civil, uh, no license for the driver, no insurance, no registration, uh, and then the mom also made a complaint, because she admitted to going, letting them ride, which you usually shouldn't have, so we did have, um, we had.
I will say that I heard from the citizen, that there were some issues under Woodlong Golf Course, late at night, of course, and whoever called, called Woodlong Security, so they luckily were told, no, you also need to call Abidale Police, because this was not a Woodlong issue, they were just out there on the golf course, so hopefully Woodlong's gonna call you as well, and, you know, together, and, man, it's, I saw it the other day, I saw some kids, and I'm like, I, I guess I should stop, and say, hey, who are you?
I'm kind of best professional.
Yeah, I say, oh, rich, yeah.
But we have, we have noticed a lot of our complaints, people have called us, and that has been one of our, they're giving points with traffic, car, physical cars, and, uh, any kind we see it, we look for it, we make sure to address it, um, sometimes there are, that was definitely a citation, using a, looking at a golf cart, sometimes it might be education, where, uh, if they're doing it for a long time, so we make sure, if we can talk to the parents, we might get a warning, it depends on the circumstances.
Sure, it, it is an issue, we, we, what we don't want to say is kids, like, the ones the other, to flip their card, they really hurt. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your service, or. Excuse me. Awesome, very much.
Yeah, the golf cart issues, I'm like, it's near here in my heart, because my son lost his best friend falling off the golf cart. So this is something that's really important. I would love to see if we could get city manager to get something from you all regarding what are the regulations, what are the laws regarding golf carts? And get something in our city line, just to remind people on a broad way, that they're not training with us on the cart.
We definitely do that, we actually on our, on our social media page, on our Facebook page, our traffic created it about two weeks ago. Kind of, kind of weird how it happened, because I think it was that Friday, it just happened on a Saturday or Sunday, that Friday, we put out a safety video on golf carts at Litchfield Park on our social media page. And then that happened two days later. We can definitely get with your social media and help share some of that out there.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your service or community, I love you guys, and we appreciate the thing about, about. All right, this takes us to our financial report, Ms. Peters.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Tonight I have the financial report through the end of May, which is nineteen percent of fiscal year, so just one month ago. Our sales tax is nearly flat from May of last year, it's just over zero percent. One thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars left from last year. Re-sell is down thirteen percent, online sales are up twenty, and fortunately restaurant cards are still at eighteen percent, and our net goals nearly doubled. Year over year, it's still up ten percent. Destruction self-tax this May is forty-one percent higher than last May, and year-over-year, thirty-eight percent lower. However, we're still over budget in both these categories. So I'd love for sales tax to move a few questions. For the full financial report, our revenues are at just over fourteen million dollars, or a hundred and six percent of budget estimates. Our interest income, I wanted to point out, is just under five hundred and twenty-one thousand. So through the end of June, we should hit, right at about six hundred thousand or just over. Every week, we've been reconciling our cash flow, and we either do a wire to or from the LGIP investment accounts, that's really into certain means, as we only keep money needed for operations in the main market account. Our operating expenses were at seventy-four percent of budget overall. There will be a couple more budget adjustment items later for council commission, city manager, special events. I underestimated a little the cost to you last month. It's not an authorization to say more, but just to authorize legislative contingency to these departments, so it's a fair amount to be vertical for you. Our net general fund operations is just under five point two million dollars. Our one-time expenses, our capital expenses are just over five million. So net, if our one-time revenue and one-time expenses is two hundred and fifteen thousand, which leaves our income balance of just under twenty-four point six million. The next two pages.
Before you go, before you go to the next page, in the future, when we present this page, since we don't have any debt service on the, to a square parking garage, because they're in property there.
Let's about have that in the calculation for percent of expenses, so it's seven eleven, assuming the blend rate is only eleven million dollars, so it should, it really should be only a ten or whatever.
The next two pages include detail about creative resources, special events. I won't go through those, but I'm sure you can. For the special revenue funds, our per revenue was just over four hundred and sixty-four thousand. The interest income per was doing much better as well, just over twenty thousand, so grand total is just over four hundred and eighty-five thousand. We've spent just about nine hundred and ten thousand, so we have an ending down, so seven hundred, just under seven hundred and four thousand. Litchfield Square, and always is paid through the end of May, total just over eight million dollars. As of today, there are just over nine hundred and thirty-two thousand remaining in the first bond, for season. The new bond that was approved last month will be in progress tomorrow. In our split revenue and expenses, they're right on par to where they should be. Living any fund balance of thirty-five thousand, and core enhancement revenue is at thirty-eight hundred, with expenses at just under sixteen thousand. Living any balance of seventy-eight thousand five eighty-six. That just takes us to our grand total, and fund balances, grand total of all funds is twenty-five point nine million. With the special revenue funds at one point four. In my report, we have any answering questions, if there are any.
Questions?
I still get, this is more just an educational thing, I still get a loss on that. Is that revenue, how, do we accrue that like monthly, quarterly, annually?
It's a monthly, in that they receive it on a monthly basis.
Okay, and does it have to be depleted at like the end of our fiscal year, or does it just?
No, we, it, it just holds up, or it's just restricted, it, it can only be spent on, but it doesn't, it's not a, it's a, it's a.
Thank you.
We have adopted a policy in the last, over the last couple of years, certainly more explicit than our, urgently here a year ago. That was going to be our goal to spend her down to zero every year, so to preserve our general fund, it's not a certain, so we're, nothing that you're thinking is serious pushing, or it isn't, because it's a certain use of words. So our goal is to get less, less of it as well.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll go on to our PGA work, okay, from this different range.
Mayor, members, council, now to go over PGA plume since last month, I can tell you that we completed an old extraction well, that's sort of, the computer ball field's been converted to an injection well, because the plume is moving, so that's positive. And there is a monitoring well that's just past the board intersection that had higher rates of TCE recently bred. That is because the extraction well behind the safe were shut down for rehab, so it kind of shows you, there's a lot of movement in the plume, whenever an extraction well goes down, it seems that TC goes into those areas. So PGA folks, the designers and the contractors are constantly installing monitoring wells, or converting to injection and extraction wells. We gave you a report, it's not what I gave you last month. So it's, it's a very moving plume, but it's moving south, so that's positive. That's all I have.
Questions? What's this moving?
Yeah, now we're coming to the fun stuff. CIPF, CIPF dates, so Stax Park, this is Tensmo Romack, as mentioned, and has been coordinating with us. We are about ninety-eight percent done. The paving is complete, the striping is being worked on, it should be done by the end of this week. We have an additional tree, and some concrete, it's damaged concrete, that's been, that was damaged, and the pavement installation is being replaced. So, so far, we are almost complete with that project, and it should be open by the end of this week, trash enclosures are also installed. So that project's budget was two hundred and sixty-five thousand, the contractors' amount was two hundred and sixty dollars, so it came under budget. Litchfield Road will overlay its complete final strapping occurred since the last meeting, so that project is a hundred percent complete, clean out. Four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar budget, and so far we're paid four hundred and five, so the last gap is coming in, and the road looks fantastic in the yard as well. Again, Southwest Valley Truck Study is not a city project, but let me give you some updates on progress. So, so far, we've gotten several updates from MAC on, on the status, we didn't have a draft report yet. But what I can tell you is that of all the information that we have so far, heavy trucks makes up about forty to forty-five percent of the average daily traffic on Camelback Road. During the monitoring timeframes, November is forty-one percent. This perspective across the nation, the highways, twenty-five percent is heavy truck, and on general urban streets in the state of Arizona, it's about twelve to fifteen percent at the end of time, so forty percent is high number. Vibration curves, I can tell you that heavy trucks, so the standard vibration for people is about seventy to seventy-two decibels. Heavy trucks are on, specifically on Camelback Road, emitting about seventy-six percent decibels, or seventy-six decibel, which is above the average, perspective-wise, the average car within a few feet is about sixty-four decibels. On the vegan truck, or, or a passing truck, is about seventy, so it's about a question, so trucks definitely are causing a vibration issue. The next steps that MAC has prepared for us is a presentation of potential remedies. Those include things like speed reduction, implementation of speed management, and lane control, which basically in trucks in the right lane, or something along those lines. They've also proposed the use of low noise pavement, which is, which is expensive, a more expensive pavement, and doesn't have as much life to it. Noise restrictions, time of day, direction of travel. Some, some other things that they're trying to be modern and think about is optimizing traffic signal timing, implementing what they call smooth truck technology, which isn't really applicable, because anybody who's seen the trucks that traveled through Camelback, they're not exactly up to date. So having the technology is, is not beneficial. They've also proposed the use of noise barriers, such as hills, vegetation, of course, noise walls, but noise walls come in at about a billion dollars a mile, so I think it's handsome. So that's my update on Southwest Truck Study, upcoming CIP projects we're working on is Diceard Dean's School Road reconstruction, that's about a thousand dollars worth of money, discussing whether. Camelback parking lot and the wall, that scope item that we do have is designed for right turn lane, it was Eastbound Shop, we get Camelback Diceard, so we know we fit a right turn lane right there at the living court right away. And then the far, further down the package, obviously, the park, the park lot, they should, they should rock it over down there this year. So update for CIP, any questions?
Oh, thank you, sir. Keith, by the way, good working with you on that parking lot, it's back, thank you. I, I do have a question, I, I'm at the intersection of Indian School and Diceard quite often, it's not very popular. But you meant, you just mentioned it as part of the CIP, but where is it, where are we in that, in that schedule or in that program?
So the intersection of Diceard Dean's School will be the northeast corner, which we asked, it's also a city, our Edward City, it's, the project is a preliminary, pre, called pre-final construction drawings. Now that, the project is the budget for the next six years, so the plan is to rapid design this year and a small part of next year, and then move into a bit out of that, the construction.
So we next year, cool.
So after July, we'll be able to have a fuzzy.
Bill, James, I saw that the Camelback Park, parking lot fence is on for next year's fiscal year, and I was going to talk about it later, but how, what's the, what comes first, the fence or the parking lot?
Oh, they're actually going to more than likely go concurrently, the preliminary design, which was completed before I got here, and then we put it on hold, and the CIPs were frozen. We got some designers at the same time, so we'll have it working currently, and we can prioritize the orientation of which one comes first, I don't think we've gone that far, but as of right now, my intent is to do it concurrently.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your report, and you will go on to our next report, but I have a question for the council. Who, who in the state of Arizona has an unofficial record for a number of council meetings attended, myself, who is not an elected official?
Give us a minute, please, go.
Good answer, so with that, we're going to use that as a segue into Litchfield's final report, final report to a council. I understand that this is perfectly four thousand and one, so if it's four thousand and one, our limits of space on this point.
Is there a Guinness representation here?
This is now.
Now that the.
We got an idea, I'm going to check with the analysts.
Now the final number, this is quite a. I think I'll find a record on the next, someone else.
How many miles?
Yeah. I put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on one of my cars.
So we are pleased to have this final report, the council tonight, and he is ending his service with our city tomorrow, which is unofficially, because we have a retirement party for it. So I assume that means that he's now retired, or will be after tomorrow.
Yeah, a week or so.
Are you a checker?
Do, do thirty is the official date.
All right, welcome to your final report.
Thank you very much. And since you brought it up, I'm going to say that it's been an honor for Bush, for me, to work with this great city, I love the city. It's, it has a lot of wonderful things about it, including the elected officials, and the common city residents, and so on. So thank you very much for allowing me to look at it.
Now we hear the floor. All right, perfect.
So in the conference about Litchfield Square, amazingly enough, we had another DUI accident on May sixteenth. And the previous one was on April sixteenth, so any reasonable person understands, stay away from the roundabout on the sixteenth. That accident took out a street light pole on Emerson sidewalk, so we're all going to take that place, in fact, ABL was up until now. The Lee's Parkway extension to Desert Avenue is essentially finished, they're working on some of the concrete, different concrete at intersections, which will have an acid edge, and both an acid edge and sandblast edge, so it's going to work very well. We're also working on, or have a mock-up, and we're doing, we'll be checking it tomorrow, ten-foot diameter pump from design, and we need sandblasted the sections of the sidewalks at the, at the intersection, just to kind of reinforce their, their whole project. Landscaping is completed on that segment, and the RPG lighting, also known as colored lighting, for the medium, in the, in the medium, for the palm trees is completed, and was tested recently. And you go to the website, you can view those testing videos, which are very cool. Paving, the final lip of paving was done being routine, and we'll be finishing up the crosswalk, figures, and road design. Preparing some metals for the two-step process for delivery to formally accept the water and sewer systems of Litchfield Square, so we're finally getting that cross finished. Through the GMV five, all that work is now pretty much underway, there's the irrigation sleeves under all, paving up and completed. They're working on a curving barrier right now on the Longmont Desert out there, and a lot of that's been completed. As you know, Honeysucker Street reconstruction is underway, that started on Monday. The street will be open through July fourth, but then closed through, after July fourth, through August, to build the south half, so right now it's a bit of a two-week gap, but it's going to close literally in July. And Nicky Gardner is currently working on the GMV six foot pole, which is basically the foundation of the rest of the infrastructure of the, of Litchfield Square. And today we did filming and interviews for a segment to be included. And today we did filming and interviews for a segment to be included about which most part is included in a TV show called The American Green. So they're, they're out there interviewing, filming for several hours this morning. An interview with Matthew and myself. And then I edit that down to four and a half minutes. So it's going to be interesting to see what the then product is. Now, my stormberry project is basically complete, except for the pump station. And we now have a delay in delivery of the full panel for the pump station. So that's kind of laying on provision of that. And our engineer is continuing to work with FEMA to get the initial letter of map revision through FEMA approval process, which is just, and how they saw. And then once that's approved, then he will work with FEMA to get the actual map changed, the footpath map, to eliminate that footpath in the area around Scottsdale. And maybe that's all.
Thank you for your report. If you have any questions, what else?
Mister, so the, congratulations, Senator. So the Liberty Water and the sewer is still not on, but it's, we're in the, we're about to cross the finish line?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of an interesting situation. You know, obviously, we're using, Nicky Gardner is using the freshwater system, but it's not really serving any purpose. However, the sewer system is very active because of Perry is all flowing from the Loma area down through Litchfield Square into the main. So that's why we're pushing very hard to get those systems turned over to what we do because we're physically active.
And second question, did you ever take the easements from J D on the ground? So they told us no fire to the show, but we can't get an answer on this one.
I just remind my contact there last week. And he said, very, um, this one.
Did you tell him you're leaving and it needs to be done by Friday?
Yeah, I gave him a lot of.
Thank you for your report. Okay, in your pack, we will see the first of the revised and newly modified report from the magistrate. A simple snapshot of the activity and then what cases that the file is for a key report. If you have questions about it, please get it with city manager. If you have comments or things that you do not like about it or information that is not in the report that we'd like to have, then give the city manager, you will work with justice, report modified. At least from now, we will take a look at the simple report, which one you have an understanding of what's going on in your. Simple, you like simple. Okay, now we're just to our consent agenda, item eight, A, through. It's a A to J. So if anyone on the council would like to take a reminder of that, consent agenda is included. Yes, the license may have been given, as you know.
No license.
All right, is there motion to adopt a consent agenda, item eight, A to J?
Say.
Almost a hundred people say aye.
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 You have a vote. All right, consent agenda is adopted as we said. Takes us to our business agenda. First item is nine A, which is an ordinance related to speed limits. We have a request to speak from a citizen on the side, Mr. Carter Wilson. Mr. Wilson, would you like to talk to us about speed limits before we get into this topic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carter Wilson. I live in the rings. And I rise in support of this change in speed limit. However, I caution you that I do not believe that the speed limit is the challenge. Enforcement is the challenge. And I'm happy to see that our police have increased the enforcement significantly since January. However, I noticed that there was a criminal speed done at Litchfield Rings and Litchfield Road during seventy-three miles an hour. And I suggest to you that that is not at all uncommon. They treat that thing like a speedway. And from there, I was doing the speed limit. Actually, I was doing forty-two according to my speedometer. I got passed by six people from there. At least one of them had been doing at least fifteen miles an hour, whatever, when they. And they rushed and into the, into the circle, slamming on the brakes. And if somebody had been cutting through, there's no way they could stop. I appreciate everything that the police do. They've got over three hundred and somewhat cases that they've been on this, this month. And I realize that they have more than speed enforcement, but it's, it's a battle out there. It really is. I could stop fifty-five people if it's what they stopped this month. I could stop that many people in one day, just on Litchfield Road, not counting Camelback, which is worse. And I've said all I need to say, but I just wanted to bring your attention to this fact. With the lower that speed limit, it's not going to change people's habits. We're just going to drive faster. And I appreciate that they stopped right there. They usually have a vehicle just west of City Hall. But that's not where they need to have it, they need to have it between the circle and Camelback. Because that's where the real speed goes on in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate your interest in the topic. Now the question is, is there any discussion concerned with any action to adopt for this twenty-three dash two seventy-three one in our city as it relates to speed limits on the street of the city? Mr. James.
So I, you know, I spent a decent amount of time over the last month trying to talk to some of the citizens and this. And you know, I like to call it drag strip, Camelback between Dyson and Litchfield Road are seventy-eight miles an hour called. I, I guess my, my thought is, is I looked at the capital improvement projects and the right that's going to go in, in the fries, that's not slated till fiscal year twenty twenty-five. It, it, I guess my concern and, and the concern that I picked up talking to other citizens was, echoes of what Mr. Wedge just says, is that we want the speed limit to thirty-five, that's not going to really change the outcome. And I wonder if the execution of lowering the speed limit, particularly to thirty-five on, on Camelback Road, is merited right now or more or less a conversation with our police departments to potentially up the enforcement on Camelback and Litchfield. And really, you know, when you, when you see a car pulled over, when you see, you know, police on the road, you see the speed come down. Matt, that's one of my comments.
We've got this. Bill, for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you, Justin. I think that probably more enforcement. But if we lower the speed limit, that kind of means that there will be more enforcement. You're going to have to be up there, well, you know, that's chicken and egg kind of thing, which comes first. Maybe, maybe the more enforcement is that is a better answer than the slower speed enforcement.
Any other questions, the council?
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The, based on Brian's report on the traffic study and the effect of the large trucks on Camelback, if we are allowed to, maybe we'll need a two-tiered speed limit on Camelback. Cars and trucks have, the trucks will even slower than thirty, than thirty-five that we're proposing. I just want to keep an open mind of that, because we can't move forward on this. This isn't an end-all in my mind, this is what we're going to do about the trucks on Camelback and noise.
We may very well need to do, we may very well need to take additional steps. There are a variety of things that the council will be looking at as we go forward, trying to get a handle on lowering the speeds of the cars and the processes that go through the field park on either Camelback or Litchfield Road. And encouraging people even more strongly to use Dyson if they want to go quickly and they want to ignore it. So your, your concept of continuing to watch this, I think, is good with us, Mr. Mayor, and we need very long. If it's possible to do something right again, with trucks having a certain, a lower, even a lower speed limit, that may be necessary as another step in our effort to mitigate the noise for people living around the Camelback. Any more questions? That much, Mr. Council?
I have a question. I, I agree with Justin in the fact that the speed limit that's in place right now is not even closely being followed on, on Litchfield or Camelback. And I would ask that we ask the city manager to speak to the police about enforcing, even if it's issues of warnings or some type of radar signs or something out there to let people know that they are going fast, they know they're going fast. If you write the speed limit, you're getting passed, left. So lowering the speed limit is just going to make, it's not going to fix the problem. Because people are already on ten, twenty miles an hour faster. I, I think we need to lower the speed limit. I do. But we need to up the enforcement, even if it's warning and education at the beginning. It gives people to understand and slow down and then what else can we do to educate the people or residents to slow down in the time of their day. Just lowering the speed limit expecting a change, I don't think is the answer. We need to ask the police to enforce it.
Just a, just as a comment, if you drive on Luwong Boulevard to the west of Litchfield Road, it's a four-lane highway with different regional, like Luwong Boulevard. The traffic flows on that road at something more like, more than thirty-five, it's a lot less than fifty. And the speed limit on that road is thirty-five. And I think people understand that it is, it's enforcement. And so it is four. We've got to, we've got to get a handle on both Camelback and Litchfield Road. Getting a handle on it, one step in that process is to lower the speed limit to thirty-five. Because people who do that, people are going to become more likely to keep their speed down around forty miles an hour to cause a limited, limited. Many people think that the speed limit on Litchfield Road is actually forty-five, so they think it's okay to drive fifty-two. We've already had somebody come in and explain to us that it's okay if you go seven miles an hour over the speed limit. Maybe up to a place of eleven miles an hour over the speed limit. So if nothing else, we're going to lower that speed by five miles an hour, but changing this. You know, we emphasize, if you think it's a forty-five mile an hour, don't understand it's a thirty-five mile an hour zone. That by itself will kind of lower the average speed. But at the same time, we're going to, I think, impress upon staff, who is going to figure out how we deal with our police department to put more enforcement out there. And it entails spending some more money to get a couple of municipal motorcycle cops to write tickets. You need to get them out there at some point, and they'll write electrical warnings for a while. And then we'll start writing tickets. And at thirty-five, it doesn't take very much to get to a criminal speeding violation. And I can tell you, those trucks coming up Camelback, they are going to be cited for criminal speeding events. So I think we're going to have to, if we have to enforce, I think the first step is getting it sent to the desk. Maybe it's here to get the fabric and people understand where it's at. Bill, some of that.
Well, I can tell you for sure that the reason that script from Luwong West to Millennium is controlled is because there's two schools on there. So I think honestly, I'm kind of a carder on this, and I think that would sit there all day long. That's the only place they'd even have to be because they could ticket five hundred people in a day. I think that those speed signs that tell you what you're going, both ways, both north and south, why can't we put those out there and keep them out there for a year? I'll admit, I'm a speeder, but when I see those signs, I slow down.
We could put signs like we have at school out there and get more than prepared to make sure staff wasn't.
Yeah, those don't, those are, those are like here, I'm talking to ones that show how fast you're going. That's, that's.
Put the one by the school bus.
Yes, right here.
They'll go right here.
Oh, I'm calling that.
Yeah, the one down. We know we're on the school.
Yeah, I do, that's maybe bigger, those, you know, over on the side. I think that, I don't know what those cost, but I think those are very effective.
The first stop, the first step of this process is to lower the speed limit. You've got to, you've got to get them lowered.
But they will, they see.
And that's city manager, he's going to make this dialogue. This is city manager. If we lower the speed limit, it's just staff understanding it's going to enforce it.
Yes, we do.
The problem is, I mean, we just like all parents, right? We, we're trying to enforce that, we've got to set them. The problem there is that, you know, people like us that drive all the time, what are you going to be attending to? Move thirty-five miles an hour speed limit, because we can get forty. I, I don't, I mean, you know, you've got points of, um, we have several electric signs where you're going to be out there a few weeks before it wants to take place. And then you are like, as the mayor said, I know we do, of course, has discretion, but there will probably one of them, one of these situations, obviously, that's part of it. But I would agree, there's a multiple function, but it's just one step of this and what everyone can do. They make that electric signs like you see on the school, I was like, I see on border. I'm going on my single day and making work. But I think, thinking in that one, I think this is the first step. I have also, um, I think this will be.
I agree, Paul Martin, and the way it's going to speed. Um, there are some signs too. I have issues with the intersection here and I'd like to see the enforcement keep that on, I guess, the intersection. So we're around our city center here right now. And there's some signs, stop signs, we have red lights all around that flash all the time, day and night. And there are solar lights, so the little solar panels on top. I wonder if they make the same thing that just says two O. You know, if you could mount a sign somewhere that reminds people, slow down.
They actually, um, that very important should be. Like for example, I'm actually one on board, if you're driving on board. I'll admit, I drive very fast passing on the board. And they change from a fast to a slow sometimes, they'll say, too fast, flash, 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 and they slow down. And then when you're getting closer, they say the speed limit you're building. So they slow down by some of your speed. That's what you're thinking of?
Um, I've seen those. But now what I was just referring to was stop signs that had a light around it that flashes that reminds you to stop.
Like you just said in school, wrong, or down.
Yes, yes. And I'm going to take you along to some driving lessons to run your speed.
So this is where I'd like to make a motion to approve the changes.
You're right, I can do that.
I would like to make a motion to approve the adjustments in speed limits.
For this twenty-three dash two seventy-three.
It's twenty-three dash two seventy-three.
We move to the segment, is there other discussion concerning?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to piggyback on all the comments you guys made. I've had conversations with Matthew about some of the signage, what I think needs to be done. And I noticed what the thing's getting done now is they're fixing the signs and roundabouts that are blocking visibility because they weren't installed right. The, the sign of Holdred Avenue is massively effective. It will only give you your speed limit up to about five miles an hour over the posted speed limit. After that, it flashes to too fast. And I drive that every day, and it is extremely effective on slowing cars down. I, I see cars all the time that whiz by me and suddenly slow down because of that sign. The, the signs that Lisa brought up, I've asked Mac to look into. There are solar-powered signs with small LED bulbs around the edges. They make stop signs and they make yield signs. And I strongly think that we need to have those solar-powered yield signs at the roundabout uh, heading north and south on Litchfield Road. And if, if we're, we're going to, we're going to be dropping the speed limit when the county come into Litchfield significantly. We need to let our citizens and other people know that there's been a change. And there will consistently be a change in, in these speed limits. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, some of our citizens don't even know the speed limit is on Litchfield. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, some of our citizens don't even know the speed limit is on Litchfield Road, that they've got a wrong thing in their mind. We need something that's more visible for everybody to see. Our citizens, our out-of-state people, people that drive for the first time, the only time ever, they need to see that drop in speed limit. And I strongly think that those, that they're, they're solar-powered flashing LEDs, and they're not very intrusive, but they do catch your attention, and they're being used more and more all around the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think for that, I think, no further comments?
I would just mention that they have those over the other grid.
I think the staff has, has gleaned the fact that we'd like to see some new signage. Any other comments? All right, the move, the second to, uh, Madoff orders number twenty-three, that's two-seventy-three hours, and they're, we're going to be looking for a, um, so we don't need to say aye if we ask the city board to go. Huh? Or do we have to do a voice vote? Okay. All those favor of the word in the signature, I'm going to say aye.
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 Any opposed? Now, one for the whole.
Vice Mayor, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Romat?
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Watson?
Aye.
Okay, that brings up, uh, item number nine B, ordinance twenty-three dash two-seventy-one, which is a many of the city builders related to commercial parking trailer property. I think the, uh, the ordinance was advised to deal with the issues that were brought by the vice mayor in the last meeting. Vice Mayor, you have any other comments on the, on this ordinance, and if this could be biased?
I know, I have no problems with it. I, I think I was against it last time because I think it didn't go far enough. But the rest of the council thinks it went far enough, so I will hope to differ.
All right, any other comments or discussion on this? Does our motion to adopt for this twenty-three dash two-seventy-one?
Two, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, a call adorable on that?
Vice Mayor, aye.
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Romat?
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Watson?
Aye.
Division.
Okay, brings us to item number C, introduction of the ordinance twenty-three dash two-seventy-four. This is a vehicular non-access easement. It relates to the development, uh, the development project, which is the Thomas, is a development area, ultimately, on a non-access easement, so right, right, right-in, right-out lane can be built. Is there any discussion? Concerning this ordinance.
Question, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I, I notice we're agreeing to condemn a one-foot strip. Is that one strip, that strip belongs to us as right of way, do we have to condemn it? Two, if we do have to condemn it, who is a party on the other side? Are they going to be every citizen who lives in the subdivision that borders that? Are we suing all the citizens? How are we doing this?
Mr. City Attorney is setting in. Should we have an answer to that, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Vice Mayor, too. Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, without getting too into the weeds, I think that's a great question. Um, and of course, what the vice mayor is referring to, if members of the council have the opportunity to look at the, uh, legal description that's attached to the exhibit, what you'll notice is that the one-foot, uh, easement actually crosses over the existing right-hand turn lane on the Orange Street Road. Um, and so while it passes over that right turn lane, it's actually passing over existing right-hand lane. Uh, the city engineer is in the middle of some discussions with representatives of the, uh, private party that's looking to develop this area, and they've been discussing uh, some of the overlapping, uh, legal rights and entitlements, particularly in that right-hand turn lane. I think they're working that out, uh, but I think one answer to the vice mayor's question would be, um, there's a question of what's absolutely required in that area, and then there's also the question of what's clear and what people can understand and what all the parties can agree on. And I think one thing that is probably true about this area is that condemnation is, is the best way to make the title very clear, to make it very clear, uh, whether, where the, uh, easement has or has not been reviewed. But it is a discussion that's ongoing, and I think it's something that staff is still talking about, and I think it's something that staff would be happy to involve, uh, this vice mayor or any member of the council who would like to discuss that in more detail.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. If, if that one foot no-access easement was recorded as part of a subdivision plat for all those homeowners that live north of Indian School, then we'd probably have to sue every one of them to, to get that, that condemnation done. And I will not be in favor of that. Uh, that, that's going to be a monumental event, trying to explain to everybody what's going on. So if you can find some other way to do it, great, but if you think we're suing, you know, a hundred of our citizens to try and get that done, I say no.
He's getting his question, thank you. So at thi- at this point, what we're doing is introducing this ordinance, which is the first step in the whole process, is not, is not an option. It's a, it's a completely default way. And this question of exactly how we're going to implement this ordinance is one that's going to have to be discussed in detail in our August meeting, which will be the next meeting. So gives our, it gives our legal team and staff and developer of the Thomas time to figure that, uh, figure out that issue, how we're going to. Any other discussion? Does our motion to enter to this ordinance twenty-three dash two-seventy-four? Their second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of introducing the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion is introduced. Staff, have you worked with the, with the developer to come up with a plan that, that this, they have enough, uh, potential to be suing every, you know, every citizen that owns that subdivision? Next item is the adoption of the city Y T schedule, which is twenty-three dash five-five-four. Any discussions? Does our motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash five-five-four to member city Y T schedule?
I just, I'm sorry, I have one question, I can get my end up quickly, though.
Okay.
Are our fees in line with what the other cities are charging?
They will be able to make them to you.
Okay. Rule of law.
Rule of law.
Is there, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash five-five-four?
Stop.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Now we're going to have a public hearing on fiscal year twenty-four final city budget. Public hearing is now open. Is there a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the presentation together, there's been no changes from the tentative budget adoption. Uh, we can pull a last minute presentation and review it again if you would like to. Uh, but again, there's been no changes in the co-budget is currently in six hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight.
Are there any questions, your councilor, in the discussion concerning the final city budget, as it has been presented to you over the last several years? Okay, if not, then we'll leave public comments that the citizens may have concerning our final city, our final city budget for fiscal year twenty-four. Seeing that, then we're going to close the public hearing. And I want to open up other area on the street light improvement, slits, uh, there, there, first we are going for budgets. Is there staff presentation?
Uh, Mayor and Council, there have been no changes to any of the slip budgets from the senior adoption. Uh, just have to get answering questions if there are any to go over the, the, the slips.
Any questions, the council, concerning the slip budgets, which have also been presented to you over the last several years or so long? Is there a move, another reason, is there, is there any public comment? No public comment? So we're going to close the public hearing. Takes us to item number G, which is adoption of resolution twenty-three dash five-five-one, which is our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four final budget, which must remain six hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, along with a five-year projected capital plan. Any other comments or discussion concerning that? One question, Councilman James.
Sir, uh, I thought the bond that we discussed for, for GMP five and six, also fiscal year twenty-four, but I saw a lot of it as GMP five and fiscal year twenty-four, and GMP, GMP six, which is fiscal year twenty-five, is that a change, or is that, or that just going to be?
It's a difference between, GMPs are contracted for rental services. Yeah. The partners generally, the tenants are reduced paperless services, so I have the same thing.
Well, we're not going to execute on GMP six until twenty-five, from some time ago.
I mean, twenty-four, not about that.
I guess I just thought that was something, well, I thought all of the GMPs were going to execute next visiting here.
GMP five was adopted in this fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah.
Start, so I don't know if we've started any of the work. The work gets built, and as it gets done, it gets in, it draws, and so we haven't started any of the work yet, but it's, it has begun. GMP six hasn't been presented to us yet, and this recital, we consider if we, if we have had that, and as that work is done, then we'll.
So no timeline, essentially, it's funded through the bond, which is.
Or, or, or partially funded through the bond.
Pay attention to, see if you can hear if this can be discussed, because the common is what comes in this.
Sure. All right, sir. Okay, continue. Any other questions, your house? That is our motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash five-five-one, which is our fiscal year twenty-four final budget. Your second. I'm not sure, there's one of the, the second.
Yeah.
So just further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Takes us to item H, which is the adoption of resolution twenty-three dash five-five-two, which is fiscal year twenty-four street light improvement this year, one hundred and three thousand. Any discussion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash five-five-two, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to items I, J, and K. All three of these are potential executive session items, we'll move to executive session to discuss each of them in turn. Unless we, we have a short discussion on this, it's not a favor, we'll eliminate the need to do an executive session, you have to be able to counsel. So we'll have staff here with a short explanation of what I think K is on about. And then we can decide on the, the number.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, a gentleman by the name of Andrew Goldworth, um, reached out to me a few months ago, um, back in twenty-ten, uh, his company had not paid sales tax that was due to the city. So the city, the time went through the process to, uh, place liens on his assets. There's a judgment against him. His father passed away, your solo, and he inherited it all, that he would like to sell his, his and his sisters. Uh, so he is offered, uh, well, the lien amount is for seventy-six thousand eight fifty-nine thirty-seven, with a closed judgment interest rate of ten percent. So the interest accrued out of today is ninety-eight thousand eight eighty-five thirty-seven, so grand total due of a hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and forty-four and seventy-five cents. Mr. Goldworth has offered to, um, would like the city to consider a cover of twenty-three thousand three hundred. And I can stop right there if you want.
The, the purpose of the executive session, we're going to discuss everything that compromise on our, our seventy-five thousand, or E, twenty-three thousand, with Mr. Goldfall, or something.
Gold.
Goldfall. Without disclosing any financial information whatsoever, so you're going to give them a tax on this, and we're, we're telling it's nothing, about the sale, how much? I think he owes me a thousand on profit, but we have no idea what the net gain from the sale is going to be. Uh, we also don't have any, 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 any substantiation orders when we, any other assets that wants to compromise our agreement.
We owe us a hundred and seventy-five.
Where's the house?
Isn't it some city?
Yeah.
And I apologize, I mean, this offer was thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand, so a little less than twenty percent of the money. What has been recommended to us is that we authorize staff and the council to, to negotiate with them, but only after obtaining full disclosure of his financials and full disclosure of the financial aspects of the sale of the house. He also supposedly has a tax lien, so we need to understand how much, what priority does the tax need to have. It's apparently required, we have priority being the trials earlier, and we may not, unless we're a prince, we'll get. And they can, they can bring something back to us that's more beneficial than this, this. So councilors, real over that, and this item, we will table it until the next trigger, which then will be the direction of staff to go figure out what's going on with Mr. Goldfall, and see if, and see what kind of transaction would be more reasonable than almost one percent of the money in the motor store.
Is that no negotiation, or has he just presented that?
No negotiation, literally, it is. Having read what his legislative agent sent to the city, I reacted most to tell, to tell him what to do. So, but I know there's no negotiation, and if he continues with the tone that he has, that's. I don't care if you're selling a house, you're a, you know, this is, you know, pay as, pay as per those, and then you can sell a house. So maybe there'll be negotiation if he, if he has been thus far.
Mr. Mayor and staff?
So I, I would just suggest, if the council's interested in, in a lot of things on this, maybe it would be a good topic for executive session.
I, I don't think it's worth an executive session, because at this point, I have no interest in doing anything with this man. And if he wants.
Vice Mayor?
He, he needs to make more disclosure, so we need some reasonable discussions, which staff can take care of. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I see no reason to go into executive session on this either. I believe, Mayor, you asked for a preliminary settlement statement, which is also known as NUT one. Uh, that is the very first document that we need to see, so we know what the finances are in relation to this house, to know how much money is coming out of it, going to, uh, the seller. Uh, if it's negative, we negotiate, if it's positive, I'm not sure we need to negotiate. So maybe if the numbers aren't, the quarters are.
I think the only, the only thing that may cause us to negotiate is, is the impact of this IRS need. So once we find out what we're, financial information, then staff can try to find a reasonable course forward. And if it's no negotiation, that's kind of a big deal, but we don't have enough information to deal with it now, so I have.
Exactly.
Table, simply table it, I don't know, we need to vote to table it.
Totally.
Second. So we need, we'll go ahead, move to table it, so it's going to move to table, we'll make sure we schedule a meeting, which will be honest, with the direction staff to go figure it out, see if we can negotiate as possible, and write back our recommendations. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?